The time is now six fifty and I would like to call this mean nowhere. So the chair is seeking a motion for the adoption of actually the amendment of the agenda. As we found out earlier today that I believe it is agenda item five point two, which was the trauma smart presentation, they will not be able to attend. So I would, I'm asking for a motion for an amendment for that to be taken off of the agenda.
I motion to amend the agenda to remove. What did you say? Zero point? I didn't hear the number.
Five point two.
Five point two from the agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
That being said, if there's no further discussion.
Don't you call the row?
Ma'am?
A roll call?
Yes ma'am, that's what I'm about to do.
Okay, okay.
Director Graves, while I have you. Director McGee?
Hi.
Director Carter?
Hi.
Director Brooks? Vice President Kendrick?
Hi.
Director Townsend? Okay, they may not be on. Chair votes I, motion does carry, I believe, five to, five to zero. So moving on to our next item, which is audience comments. Are there any audience comments?
Mr. Watry?
Yes ma'am.
And I apologize, I probably should have interjected before I was, I wasn't really clear with what you were doing. So you moved to amend the agenda, but you didn't move to adopt your agenda, so. Go ahead and adopt your amended agenda.
So seeking a motion to adopt the amended agenda. Is there a second?
I second.
Without further discussion? Director Townsend? Vice President Kendrick?
Hi.
Director McGee?
Hi.
Director Carter?
Hi.
Director Brooks? Director Graves?
Hi.
Chair votes I, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to three point one, audience comments.
Yes, I have a comment. I raise my hand of President Watry. This is Joaquisha Briggs. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing, I'm doing great. Board of Education, I just want to say how excited I am to hear about your reentry plan to school. And so look forward to getting that information as soon as possible. I know that it's evolving every day. So looking forward to hearing about the reentry plan for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. And thank you Board of Education for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. Also, thank you for, thank you for your audience comment. Look forward to hearing from you. So any more audience comments? All right, with no further audience comments, I'd like to move on to item, I believe it's four point one, which is. Well, actually, let me go back.
President Watry?
Yeah.
I'm hearing someone's TV. I don't know whose TV it is.
Can everyone please mute their, mute their phones or mute their devices, please? Thank you. Moving on to item four point one, which is the approval of the draft minutes for the regular session of June eleventh, twenty twenty. The special regular session board meeting, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty. And the special regular session board meeting of July ninth, twenty twenty. The board is, the chair is seeking a motion.
I would move, Mr. President, that we, that we approve the minutes of June eleventh, and twenty fifth, and the board meeting minutes of, of July ninth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or do board members need any time to review?
No, no.
With your silence, I'll call it to a vote. Director Townsend? Vice President Kendrick?
Hi.
Director McGee?
Hi.
Director Carter?
Hi.
Director Brooks?
Hi.
Director Graves?
Hi.
Chair votes I, motion carries six to zero. Moving on to, to item five point one, superintendent comments.
Watry, welcome, Board of Education. Just so people know, this is our inaugural meeting together between the new superintendent and the board. And I had hoped that we had been in person, so I had some artifacts I wanted to share with you. But I think I'll save that for our retreat towards the end of the, the month when we can have some dialogue around some of those pieces. But I've been, this is my second week arrived. There's been a lot that's happened in this short period of time. As you know, COVID has been a significant factor in terms of the, the work that happens within the district. I also want to share, I think I sent a communication to board, that there was in the TIF Commission approval of a builder that's building a grocery store and other facilities in the community, which will have some real benefits for the district attorney. Fields and I will be working on a memorandum of understanding around some of the financial and social impact that'll help our students and our families through this, this new initiative. And we look forward to other projects that are on the line. So I think we're off to a good start. Most of you have seen the communication around the, the return to learn plan. Wanted to share a little bit about that, that you've seen that we've kind of decided on the three phases around the red zone, the yellow zone, the green zone, the red zones when it's hot. So we'll be using some data to determine each of those zones. And then the articulation of transportation, food services. And of course, one of the things I've pushed staff on, we have to really increase the instructional content. And in the spring, I know we had some success supporting our students, but that was mostly around continuity of learning and maintenance. But now we have to look at how we can do sort of distance and remote learning in a way that students are going to still progress in their, in their content as we move forward. Just to let the board know in terms of process, you haven't missed a beat in terms of what's been happening. We've been working with the staff around developing the plan. We met actually today with the task force, the task force is reviewing and giving feedback. And I've been working with President Watry and Vice President Kendricks to set up a special board meeting towards the end of the month, where we'll be able to bring back the proposal, the final proposal in terms of what it looks like. So the board can have some input on that before we put the final piece out to the community. I have had some really good communication and feedback. I've done a number of media around our return to learn plan and some of the actions that were taken. I've had some really good feedback around our progress so far. We put a survey out, actually not a survey, but a declaration form to, to parents to declare between an option A and an option B, which will give us data to help inform our plan. And that's either if they want straight virtual for the year or for the first few months, or they're looking at our three-phase plan. So that'll give us the information we can, we can provide to associate superintendent Clapmire around the, the discretion between which staff are going to be virtual and which staff are going to be doing some of the blended pieces. And so once we have that, we'll be able to move forward with the plan. So look forward to continuously communicating with you on that. And then at some point, you'll get the final consent on what the plan looks like. And we'll be able to share that with our community. So here I am, our first board meeting together. Hopefully, we can get through this COVID and we can sort of start to dialogue in face to face at some point. But looking forward to the opportunity and looking forward to the chance to collaborate. And thank you for all, all the board members that did receive my communication. Want to, when I look forward to a one-on-one conversation at some point, whether if it's Zoom or in person at some point. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilbein.
Thank you.
So if there's no further comments, moving on to consent items, six point O, in which we will go to six point one, which is requesting board action relative to the approval of the consent items. Is there any additional information provided regarding these two items?
I don't have any additional items. Does anyone have any questions regarding them I can answer?
No questions.
All right, well, if there is no further discussion or no board members have any questions, the chair is seeking a motion to approve the July twenty, or the actually, the consent items.
A motion for the board to accept the consent items presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? With your silence, I will call it to a vote. Vice President Kendrick?
Hi.
Director McGee?
Hi.
Director Carter?
No.
Director Brooks?
Hi.
Director Graves? Director Graves, are you muted?
I'm sorry, I put myself up, you know, when you're talking. So yeah, yes.
Director Townsend? All right. Chair votes I, motion carries five to one. Moving on to, moving on to what seven point zero, new business. I believe seven point one is the June twenty twenty financial report.
Donna? It's the PowerPoint, the bottom one, if you go back. Sorry. Can you go back to the other document? For that, it would be the PowerPoint for bottom one. There we go. Thank you. Good evening. This is the financial report as of June thirtieth. So this is where we ended the nineteen twenty school year. You'll see that the working budget for revenues was at ninety one million six. And we received in nine point two million in revenues in June for a total of eighty four million nine for the year. So there was a remaining budget of six point six million that wasn't received. So we received in ninety two point seven percent of the revenue budgeted compared to ninety three point five in June of two thousand nineteen. The expenses for the end of the year. And we had the working budget of eighty five million one. We spent a little over ten million in the month of June. For a total year-to-date expenses of seventy nine million one. Our remaining budget of five point nine, it wasn't spent, which is ninety three percent of the budget was spent compared to ninety four point three percent in June of two thousand nineteen. There were no budget changes in the month of June. These are just historical additions to the budget. Go to the next screen for me. These are just the TIF education invoices. I have, we have not done an invoice for. I did hear from the EDC this week that the check is in the mail. So I'm hoping to receive the final payment for invoice three this, next week. If you can go to the next one for me. Just keep going. You can go through this whole TIF education invoice piece. There's a couple slides. Okay, so that leads us to the fund balance. We ended the year at a sixteen point four four three. So it was just a little bit better than the projection that I was showing in May. So I think that's really well. Eleven million three in the bank. The budget for the twenty twenty one school year is sitting at a thirteen point eight two four. And I looked over the numbers again after our last presentation. I had taken two hundred students out of each of the years. I changed that down to eighty for the twenty one, twenty two and the twenty two, twenty three. I also changed the amount of the capital transfers. They were sitting at two point five million. So you'll see that the fund balances look a little bit better than they did in May. And at the end of twenty two, twenty three, we're setting at a seven point five. So now this projection does not have the twenty three, twenty four school year since it still has the nineteen twenty on it. But it looks a little bit better than the presentation that I did in May. Does anyone have any questions for me? On the financial report?
Oh, I do. So just by taking out eighty children, it increased it, our fund balance to seven point five percent? If that's what I'm hearing, I'm sorry.
No, I had taken out two hundred students and.
Oh, two hundred.
So it was totally, a total of six hundred. I changed that to eighty students. So then it was just an actual, uh, two hundred and forty compared to six hundred. So it was a large revenue that we were expecting. So that made a difference. And then I took out about six hundred thousand total in capital transfers, which is about a percent in itself. So there was some adjusting that I did to make it a little bit closer to probably projection. Since we didn't, we only lost eighty students this year and from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty. But I had done the two hundred projection when I had done my three-year projection.
Oh, okay.
So I thought, I'll change that, help the picture. So.
Okay, so the eighty is closer to our projection.
Yes.
Like closer to the numbers, got you. Okay.
Based on what happened in eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty. Yes.
Nineteen to nineteen twenty. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks. You're breaking up.
I think we lost.
You have a question, Ms. Ross?
When Mr. Brooks comes back, we'll, we'll let him ask his question. Does anyone else have any questions?
Am I back?
Yes, sir. You sound back.
I'm still having a hard time hearing.
And I think you.
Did we lose him again?
I think we lost him.
You want to get him to put his question into the chat, maybe, that he can respond to it?
That would be good.
Let's see.
Okay, maybe I can get it, gentlemen. I was asking, is it too early to determine when or not we're going to have to board some at the end of the calendar year? Let you tie this over until other funds come in.
Well, if everything were normal, and ending at a sixteen point four three three, I would say no. But we don't really know what our state funding is going to look like. I would still say that there's a possibility that we'll have to do another tax anticipation note. But I'll know more come end of September, mid-October.
I heard reported that. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. If, if everything were normal, I would say no because of our fund balance. But because of COVID and we don't know exactly what our state funding is going to be, I would probably plan on doing another tax anticipation note. But I probably, I'll probably know at end of September, probably mid-October, whether that's going to be necessary or not.
Thank you, thank you.
Directors, do you, do you have any further questions?
No.
We're recommending approval of the June twenty twenty financial report.
Thank you. So the chair is seeking a motion for the approval of the, of this financial report?
I motion to approve the June twenty twenty financial report as, as stated. Second.
There is no further discussion. Director Townsend?
Hi.
Vice President Kendrick?
Hi.
Director McGee?
Hi.
Director Carter?
Hi.
Director Brooks?
Hi.
Director Graves? Ms. Graves, you there?
Hi. Can you?
Yes, ma'am. Chair votes I, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Board.
We were on item seven, seven point two.
Okay, the next four items are mine and they're all related to new, to nutrition services for the twenty twenty one school year. We'll start off with the prime vendor. I have our director of nutrition services with us as well, Ms. Brandon Sims. I want to take this opportunity to kind of shout out about her and her staff and how they handled the pandemic and continue to feed our families all along the way, putting her and her staff in harm's way during that very crucial time for our families and our communities. So I wanted to say that to the board and how much we appreciate what her and her staff during, did during that very difficult time. So shout out to her for that. They did a tremendous job. And I know a lot of our families really depended upon their services. So. So in that spirit, our first was prime vendor for the twenty twenty one school year, coal, coal wholesale. We entered into a contract with coal wholesale in the spring of two thousand eighteen. We did in a market, market basket comprised of at least seventy five percent of the total food and supplies in the budget. Coal was awarded the contract for a one-year term effective for the eighteen nineteen school year with option to renew for two one-year extensions. And per our agreement, they, we extended them to the nineteen twenty school year for the first renewal opportunity. We've had a good success with them and have had a good relationship with them. And we'd like to extend again that final renewal of one-year contract for the twenty twenty one school year. And this would be the final year and the last renewal. The renewal grocery and supply prices for coal reflects about a half percent increase. These are primarily fixed prices that must be honored, even if the company must substitute a higher-priced item for any reason. Coal Wholesale partnered with our nutrition services staff as well to provide some professional development for our staff in the kitchens and sponsor additional team-building activities during the school year. That we feel like they've been a really good partner. They're responsive to our concern and take action when we feel like it is necessary. The district administration recommends coal wholesale foods as the food prime vendor for the twenty twenty one school year.
Thank you, Mr. Wheatley. With that being said, is there any questions?
Um, I have a question on that slide because there was going very fast. I couldn't see. But there were certain spots on there from when I reviewed it yesterday that says NA. I guess there's no price next to it on the slide. If you kind of go through it again.
Ms. Sims, could you want to answer those questions?
There was, okay. I was just curious because I didn't see a price list and so I didn't know what that meant because it had NA next to them. So I know we don't have a price for those certain things on there. If you want to pull it back up.
Happy to respond. I think that there, I think there was only actually one on the prime vendor specifically. And that was the, one of our cheese products. And that's because we're switching the brand of the product. So it's difficult for us to compare the price this year of one brand to the price of last year's one brand. So there, if you look at the cheese specifically, it's actually American cheese. I think that's the one that you're talking about.
Oh, I can't see it on our slide. I'm sorry. I don't see what we're talking about.
Okay, well, this year we, when we purchased from coal wholesale, we purchased a product from Schreiber, the cheese manufacturer. And this next year, we'll be purchasing a product from Bangards. So even though you don't see a price for this year for the product that we previously used, there is a price for what we will be using moving forward. But I believe there was just one item that was like that because we switched the brands.
Is that what Mr. Wheatley was talking about when it could be a price change? You know, even though it can fluctuate higher than what it used to cost, we still have to honor that in that fixed amount that we're trying to renew the contract for, right? So your price can go up. It can kind of go up depending on.
Actually, on most of our products, the prices are actually fixed. There are, there are some products such as ground beef, possibly some produce, possibly some dairy products that might go up based on what's ever happening in the world.
Correct.
But for the most part, our prices are fixed. I did learn earlier this week that something that is normally a fixed price for us, that will not be a fixed price for us, are gloves. And we go through a lot of gloves in food service. So I do have a price right now that is very reasonable. And I'm bringing in several cases right now due to anticipated shortages that have been expressed by our supplier. And since they cannot guarantee the pricing for the entire year, I'm taking the price that we're paying right now, which is very, very reasonable.
Right, okay. Yeah, because I was looking here. It said, the, it could rise as much as fourteen percent each year, if I'm correct.
That isn't, um, for us specifically, that's just in general. Like food prices in general can go up as much as fourteen percent. For us, from the prices that we paid for school year nineteen twenty to what we're anticipating to pay for twenty twenty one, they quoted us a price of only a half percent increase. But if you go to the grocery store, you may pay fourteen percent more than what you paid last year.
Correct. Okay, and so we, the gloves was the only thing that we're talking about that you haven't got a total price on, if I'm correct, gloves.
Gloves is the only thing that is normally fixed that they have told us will not be a fixed price. But I'm purchasing those products now at the price that we're paying right now with anticipated shortages so that we have them in supply. And we don't have to worry about that fluctuating price. I don't, don't want to deal with that. We don't want to deal with shortages either.
No, you're fine. Will paper towels and like hand sanitizer, anything like that be included due to COVID?
Those are Mr. Wheatley's items.
Okay, Mr. Wheatley, that. Oh, sorry, Mr. Wheatley. Okay.
Those are separate from the food pieces and we have been buying all of those supplies. I think Skinner talked about it in the June board meeting. We've been buying those supplies all summer and continue to buy those supplies up to and including during the school year. So please understand that all those items are hard to find.
Yes, sir, yeah.
You buy bulk and as much as you can, when you can, until they run out, and then you look for another source. So we're competing obviously with the health industry and all other kinds of industries, including other schools and higher education people for all the same supplies. So, and obviously, there are some groups who give priority over, over us. Healthcare facilities always get higher priority. So a lot of the items we're talking about that are scarce or are things that we can't get because the health community is taking them first and have priority. So we're, we're finding enough and right now, it's like Ms. Sims says, we're going to be fighting supplies constantly until this pandemic is over.
Okay, thank you.
Board of Education, do you have any further questions before I ask for a motion? Board of Education, do you have any further questions before I ask for a motion? Well, that being said, chair is seeking a motion.
I move that we accept coal prime as the vendor for nutritional services for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, with no further discussion, Doc, Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Did you hear me?
I heard. So say aye, Ms. Ms. Graves, if you have.
Aye.
There you go. Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero.
Next, Anderson Erickson or milk or dairy dairy bid for the year. Anderson Erickson was the lowest and most responsible milk and related dairy products in the spring of 2018. Anderson Erick, Anderson Erickson was awarded the contract for a one-year term effective August of 2018 to July of 2019 with the option for renew for two one-year extensions. Last year, the nineteen twenty school year was the first of the one-year extensions and the 2021 school year will be the second and final of the renewal of the one-year terms. Renewal milk prices reflect an increase, but as as indicated on, including on the bid tabulation, but are within the escalator clause of the original contract and sixteen percent less than the firm bidding price that's currently out there. So we have a very small increase in comparison to what bid pricing is at this current time. Escalator prices have never reached or exceeded firm pricing in the seven-year partnership that we've had with Anderson Erickson. And the nutrition services department is satisfied with the products and services that they that they bring us. The nutrition service department recommends Anderson Erickson as our daily, as our dairy provider for the 2021 school year.
Any questions from the board?
No.
So the chair is seeking a motion.
A motion to accept the Anderson Erickson as the vendor, a milk vendor for the twenty twenty-one year, school year.
All right, with it moved in second, with no further discussion, I'll bring to the vote Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Director Graves. Director Carter.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Townsend.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next up is bread for the 2021 school year. It's the same scenario where in the spring of 2018, we awarded Roma Bakery. Roma Baker was actually the only bid we had that year. Districts throughout the Kansas City metro area directly request annual bread bids from other companies like Bimbo Flowers and Cerrapie, but all report that Roma is the only response that they normally receive. Roma provides exceptional service and quality products and was awarded the contract for a one-year term for the eighteen nineteen school year with the option to renew for two one-year terms, nineteen twenty being that what first year of that renewal and 2021 being the second and final of the renewal. Renewal bread prices reflect an increase that are set firm for the entire contract of the renewal period for one year. The school nutrition department is satisfied with the products and the services provided by Roma and recommends that Roma Baker be retained as a bread provider for the nineteen or for the 2020 and 2021 school year.
If the board does not have any questions, the chair is seeking a motion.
A motion to accept Roman Bakery as the bread vendor for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Being that there's no further discussion, I'll bring it to a vote. Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The last one is produce and much like the others, La Fredo Produce was bid out and they awarded the bid in spring of 2018. And they went through a first one-year kind of, so eighteen nineteen was the first year we had them. We had a renewal for nineteen twenty. But due to, due to the fluctuating cost of produce, a bid was put back out for the purpose of obtaining the lowest price and the appropriate price for the 2021 school year. CNC Produce, who we actually have had, who we have worked with before, provided the most competitive price for the upcoming school year. The nutrition service department recommends CNC Produce as our produce provider for the 2021 school year.
Without any further discussion, if there is no questions, chair is seeking a motion.
I move that we accept, was it CNC Protos as the produce provider for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, with no further discussion, we'll bring it to a vote. Vice President Kendrick. Director Brooks. Director Brooks, you there? All right, Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves. Ms. Graves, if you said aye, we can't hear you.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director McGee. All right. So chair votes aye, motion carries, I think, five to zero?
Aye.
Six to zero, six to one, sorry. Zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item.
Good evening, Board. This is Katie Rowe. I have the next item. The item is in relationship to Board of Education policy IKFB. Policy IKFB is related to graduation exercises. The policy states that unless otherwise stated in this policy, students may only participate in graduation ceremony if they have successfully completed all graduation requirements or the requirements to receive an alternative diploma. The reason I bring this policy to you today is because we have eight Missouri Option students from Burke Alternative, Burke Academy, who are working to complete their high set testing later this month in July and early August. The testing centers were closed when schools closed in mid-March due to COVID and those testing centers did not open back up until the middle of June. Unfortunately, for our students, once the testing centers did open back up, it was a mad dash to get tests scheduled. And unfortunately, we were not able to schedule students right away when they, when they were ready to test. We also needed to do some remediation. So we have eight students who are still working to complete graduation requirements. The testing centers were closed through obviously no fault of their own. They are all scheduled and have test dates ranging from this last week all the way through July the thirtieth. Because of that, we are requesting an exception to Board Policy IKFB for this year only to allow these students to participate in the drive-through graduation ceremony on July the twenty-seventh. Just as a note to the board, per Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or DESI, all students do have until August thirty-first to complete graduation requirements for this year's cohort, and that was a waiver that they put in place. At this time, the superintendent recommends an exception, a one-time exception to Board of Education Policy IKFB to allow these students to participate in the class of 2020 drive-through graduation ceremony.
And if there are no questions, the board is, the chair is seeking a motion for this exception.
I move that we.
I still moved that. I have a so moved that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of for the IKFB to be allowed these students participating in class twenty twenty graduating ceremony. Is that, is that the one we all?
Yes, sir.
Because they're blanked out there, man, too. Okay, so be it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. With no further discussion, Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director McGee.
McGee got kicked off.
Okay. Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Board.
Next item on the list.
Good evening. The next item on the list is the contract renewal for Link. I'm sure most of you believe that Link is our partner that provides before and after-school care for pre-kindergarten through ninth grades. We've had greater Link service since the two thousand seven, eight school year. It provides care at all seven of our elementary sites as well as Freedom Arkley and Irvin Pre-K Centers, Smith-Hale Middle School and the freshmen at Ruskin High School. This is a contract that is well over ten million dollars. However, our portion of it is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's also paid through in-kind contributions as part of the contract. So we will look at certain rental space, if you will, and space that they occupy. We do a detailed analysis of what that costs and we submit that with our bill each month. The value of these kinds, again, will sometimes even exceed the cash contribution. And our actual expenditure, as I said, is only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this service. It's paid for with state and local funds and it's budgeted in the community services account. And again, this is a service that is free to all students in kindergarten through ninth grade. There is a nominal fee for the pre-K portion if parents choose to elect that. And again, we've had Link for over the past decade. So the superintendent has recommended that we continue this partnership with a renewal for the contractual agreement for the 2021 school year.
All right, if there's no further questions from.
I have a question. So even, I I think I want to just ask, since we're going through this whole COVID nineteen situation and with us renewing the contract and say, for instance, the kids are pulled out of school again and they have to do virtual learning. So is there any, I know I'm asked for a lot, but would they cut us like some type of discounted rate or maybe something? Because I mean, the kids are not going to be there. We're paying the contract. But what if the kids are not there in school? So we're basically paying for something and there's no kids at the school. So we're paying for the contract. I was just wondering if there's any way like we can get something discounted or some type of pro rate or something for the kids when they're not there in school.
I will let you know that, again, you know, this is a, a big organization, as you know. Link has several other districts besides just ours. And, you know, they did basically at the beginning, like May first, have to furlough close to five hundred of their employees. And as they bring them back, you know, they do kind of have to kind of ensure employment for them so they're ready when we do need them. As we go from, like I said, the red indicator into the yellow, if you do have there, we're going to need to have the workers available.
I'm sorry.
Point of order, point of order, somebody please mute your phone or device. Can you mute, can you mute all, can you mute all participants?
Okay. And as I was saying, you know, they did go ahead and furlough like close to five hundred employees May first. And as they bring them back, you know, they have to ensure employment so they will be ready when we do need them. But I'll also share that, you know, while they were with us, they did help us deliver lunches. They helped deliver hotspots. You know, they're helping us in other ways. As we start to look at our new plan, we are talking about having possible care for the essential care workers. And so we've already had those discussions, you know, how they could help in that capacity. So I envision that, you know, they will be doing different activities to help. They've also done virtual chess and different activities after school for students. So they're going to be very much involved. It may just be in a different capacity. It may not always be that before and after-school care in traditional sense, but they will continue to be a partner of ours in different varieties. And again, hopefully, there'll be some opportunities for new, you know, involvement with Link in a situation that maybe that they haven't helped us before, but the situation will, you know, maybe instigate or allow.
So if there are no further questions or even comments, I will, the chair is seeking seeking a motion for the renewal of this contract.
I move that we go with the superintendent's recommendation to renew the contract with Link for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Is there a second?
A second.
If there's no further discussion, Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick. Director Townsend.
Aye.
Graves. I heard that hint. Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Right. So item, the item we're talking about now is the Board of Education committees. As of July twenty twenty, these are the permanency of these of these committees after much discussion with board members as far as their capacity and their interest. For the Policy Education Accountability Committee, I as the chair will be chairing that committee with committee members Brian Townsend and Alvin Brooks. Superintendent delegates are Carl Skinner, Tanya Franklin, Casey Klatmeyer, Executive De Facto Member Superintendent Yao Bing. Yao Bing. For the Finance Facilities Committee, the chair is, is Vice President Kendrick. Committee members are Tramis Carter and Daron McGee with superintendent delegates to the committee being Dr. Carl Skinner, Shelley Wiltsy, Dan Wheatley and Executive De Facto Member Superintendent Yao Obing. Our, our MSBA delegate is, is Ms. Carl, Ms. Carl Graves, Carol Graves, excuse me, and with her alternate being Irene Kendrick. That being said, I would like for the Finance Committee Chair to, or any members to state anything that they would like, any motions that they would like to bring towards, to the board to have added on to the agenda for the committee, for the Finance Committee. So in other words, the chair is seeking a motion for any items in which are to be added to the Finance or Facilities Committee.
Mr. McGee. What, what did you want to add to the, to the agenda? She's still there.
She's still there.
Not sure.
I believe if he wanted to update from.
Yes.
So, um, what item would you like to add, sir?
I, I had asked about, um, the, um, Dr. Um, Klapmeyer adding about the finance, about the teacher pay and the dis- uh, and equity of teacher pay. And then I think we eventually talked about, Ms. Kendrick, we also talked about the equity and administrative pay as well.
Yes, and.
For, the, about the, um, pay with administrators and teachers. And he was going to do a presentation about that.
Alright. So, uh, Chair is seeking a motion for this, this item to be added to the Finance, uh, Facilities Committee.
Uh, I move that we add that to the committee.
Alright, is there a second?
I second that.
Um, without further discussion, uh, bring it to a vote. Uh, Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director McGee. Director McGee. Um, Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Gotcha. Uh, Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
And, uh, Director Brooks.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero. Um, are there any other items which, uh, should be brought to the Finance Facilities Committee by board members? So for, um, uh, are there any items to be brought to, uh, the Policy Education Accountability Committee? So, um, I wanted to give everyone a fair chance to, uh, to be able to putting items on this agenda. Um, I am going to put, uh, I would like to motion for three items and also explain those three, what those three items are. Um, the first item is the, uh, as stated at the, at the previous meeting, uh, um, as Chair of the Policy Committee, I want to ensure that we are reviewing our policies and making sure that they're up to date, uh, and that we will be reviewing, um, the, uh, A portion or section of our, um, of our policies. Uh, with that being said, um, I would also like to add the items of, um, the, uh, a resolution for restorative practices, which has been added to our, uh, stu- our school, uh, discipline pol- discipline policy, as well as, uh, bringing forth a draft for, uh, a policy concerning equity. Um, the Chair is, is seeking a motion, uh, to have these items added to the, uh, Policy Education, Education Accountability Committee.
So both.
Is there a second there?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, if this, if there is no questions or further discussion, uh, I'll bring it to a vote. Uh, Director. Director Townsend.
Aye.
Uh, Director McGee.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Peyton, please, thank you for, um, adding those to our, uh, those items to our agenda. I appreciate it. Um, that being said, moving on to the next item. I'm trying to get to my agenda. So, uh, which is, uh, nine point zero, which are future board, uh, future, uh, items and future meeting dates. The Board of Education will go on retreat, uh, um, on July thirtieth, twenty twenty at five thirty. Um, July thirty-first, twenty twenty at five thirty, and August first at eight AM. Uh, we will also have our regular boards, uh, meeting session, um, August twentieth, twenty twenty at six thirty. And if there is no further questions, um, the board, the, the Chair is seeking a motion, uh, to go back into closed session. And adjourn this meeting.
I motion to adjourn our current meeting and to resume our closed session meeting.
So, um, without further discussion, Director Townsend.
Aye.
Director McGee.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Kendrick.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Did you hear me?
Chair votes aye, motion carries seven to zero. Everyone, thank you for attending. Have a wonderful night.